This Saturday is going to be the second City of Gallatin Cruise Inn, happening in Gallatin City Hall parking lot. Happens from five until nine. Next Thursday is the Sumner County Transit Summit, happening at Volunteer State Community College. That's at 5:00 PM. I particularly would encourage the council to attend that. And any other interested party is welcome to attend as well. There's a Habitat for Humanities dedication of the 2017 Apostle New Home Build, number fifty-five, for Habitat of Humanity of Sumner County. That's on Rucker Street, happening at 3:00 PM on the thirtieth. And then on the first, there is a ribbon cutting at Edward Jones' Brittany Greenwood Financial Advisor. And I think that takes us up to the next council meeting. Do want to remind everyone that we are fast approaching the eclipse, the Great Gallatin Eclipse. I hope you see the banners on the square and like them. And that will be on the twenty-first of August. And we're expecting a large influx of people for that, and we'll certainly welcome them. I do want to make just a couple of comments. One, great first cruise inn for the City of Gallatin. Certainly appreciate the support of the Public Works Department and the city and the Police Department. Also, a huge thanks to Mr. Hall, who organized it, and his crew of helpers, because it was a full, fully packed event. And we expect the same this week. Again, I want to mention my compliments to Liberty Baptist Church, who organized the Fourth of July event. And looked like it could have been a bad weather day, but it wound up being a great day. Huge attendance, lots of accolades over the great fireworks display, and how well that has gone. And want to offer congratulations to Engineering and Public Works on the successful move of the Franklin House. We've got it almost to the site. Next move will be on to the foundation, and that will happen sometime in the future. But that was an exciting day on July twelfth. And finally, I'll mention that the Reader's Digest voting has, although it seems like you can still vote online, we think it's closed, and Gallatin should have finished with thirty percent of the vote. We won't know if we've won for some time. I don't know if we'll know before the issue comes out, which will be early October. But we do know that we had the most votes. And I have been told by the folks at Reader's Digest that they will be making several visits to the top communities in the next several weeks. So, that's just my tip for what they might be doing in the future. I don't know anything for certain, except that I'm just very proud of our community. I was happy to be able to tell them that not only are we very nice, we're also very prideful and a bit competitive. So, I think that was a fair assessment. That concludes the mayor's comments this evening. That moves us on to the regular agenda. And the first item on the agenda is a public hearing. And this is public hearing on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-six dash forty-nine. And I'm going to recognize Councilman Mayberry for that.
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, rezoning two lots, comprising approximately point-five-eight-plus-or-minus acres from CS Commercial Services District to the CC Core District Commercial District, located at two-sixty-two East Main Street and two-sixty-six and two-sixty-eight East Main Street. Authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Anyone who'd like to speak publicly concerning this property, please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Okay, public hearing is now open. I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so we would declare public hearing on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-six dash forty-nine closed. Item number two is second reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-six dash forty-nine. Councilman Mayberry.
Yes, this is second reading on the same property that was just described under the public hearing notice. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Mayberry, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
I just need to abstain because the property owners are my cousins.
Is there a reason we're doing second reading and public hearing at the same time?
Um, I think because it had gotten held up because of, you know, the timing of missing a meeting, and so...
I was just curious.
I think we asked to do that last time around. We would normally, I hope we did. So, does anybody have any objection to that?
No, I disagree.
Okay, okay, well, thank you for that. So, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. And Ms. Kettel, you will note Ms. Love's extension, okay? Item number three is second reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-five dash forty-four, and Councilwoman Love is recognized for this.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I need to move to rescind the June twentieth second reading of ordinance number zero-one-seven-zero-five-four-four due to an error in the date for the grant that was placed on the agenda.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Love to rescind the original. Second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Ms. Love, you may go on. Pass unanimously.
Thank you. Now, I would like to move to approve the second reading of ordinance oh-one-seven-zero-five-four-four, which is an ordinance appropriating funds for the two thousand twelve-thirteen home grant.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Love, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-five dash forty-four. With all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item four is second reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-three. Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriations fund in amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and ninety-seven cents for salaries and benefits adjustments by classified position, reclassifications. So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash five-three. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It passes unanimously. Item five is first reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-two. Councilman Kemp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance, meaning the Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen, Article one, Section sixteen-four, meaning the title and the definitions, and this has to do with abandoned automobiles. So moved.
Motion by Councilman Kemp, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-two does pass unanimously. Item six is first reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-four. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is first reading for ordinance appropriating amount not to exceed twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents for the lease purchase of new fire apparatus for the Gallatin Fire Department. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Okay.
I had a conversation with Chief yesterday, and I support this wholeheartedly. But I'm not sure that we're really going to do this now, are we, Chief? Can you come up just one second? We may need appropriate and do something a little different. I don't know yet, but...
Good evening. I met with Mr. Overton yesterday, and we did briefly discuss this matter. We've ran into a little hiccup. The company that we were going to use to do the financing option for the lease purchase informed us on Friday that they're no longer in the financing business. And so, we're at a crossroad trying to determine if we're going to seek additional options for financing, or if we're going to just stand by and look for other options, possibly to come up with a new plan to purchase outright, or to purchase over two fiscal years versus doing the financial, finance option. So, we did have that conversation, and no decision's been made yet. We're kind of like in limbo, trying to gather some information. I also spoke with Ms. Rachel in Finance as well, to try to get some idea on the best course of action. And again, no decisions were made. We were just gathering some information at this point.
So, do we need to defer this to a future work session?
We can.
I would like to do that, because I so, I wholeheartedly support us buying this apparatus. But, you know, if we can't do it the way we needed to do it, let's, let's get it done the way we need to do it. So, however that is, I'm open to it, and I discussed with him, you know, maybe we just need to pay for it.
The next work session that you're in town, and I will say this, I'm concerned about paying for it outright until we have, I haven't tracked being back.
I understand.
Um, so the next work session, when you're in town, will be Tuesday, the eighth of August?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you think we can have something by then?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you have it by then, Chief?
We will.
Let's do it that.
So, I withdraw my motion.
Yeah, let's just defer it to the end because...
Withdraw your motion, withdraw the second. Would someone like to make a...
I'll make a motion, we defer, and like I said, I wholeheartedly support it. I just want to defer it, and let's find a way we're going to pay for it, so...
I'll second that.
Can we say to August eighth work session? Okay. So, have a motion to defer from Councilman Fennell, a second by Vice Mayor Overton. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, it is deferred to August eighth work session. Moving on to item number seven is first reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-five. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance appropriating funds in amount of fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and ninety cents for salaries and benefits adjusted by position reclassification. Motion?
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to note, Ms. Johnson has laid on your desk and updated ordinance. The ordinance that was placed in your packet and on the agenda, in the second paragraph, be it further ordained, that paragraph, it says be appropriated from the water sewer fund balance. It should say general fund balance. And the ordinance that you have in front of you now has the general fund on there. So, I just wanted to note that.
Ms. Gregory is very generous, but no. So, the appropriate one is on your desk, so can... Can the motion apply to the one that is on your desk and the second, not the one that is in your packet?
Correct.
Okay, so I do have a motion and a second. Any discussion beyond that? All in favor of ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item eight is first reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-six. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is first reading on order waiving TAP fees on behalf of Habitat for Humanity. Be it ordained by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, that the City of Gallatin Public Utilities Department shall waive any TAP fee for water and sewer service associated with Seventy-Eleven Pay Street, Gallatin, Tennessee, on behalf of Habitat of Sumner County. And I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is first reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-six. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. And it does pass unanimously. Item number nine is first reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-seven. Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen, in reference to horse-drawn carriages. And I so move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Fennell. And is there any discussion?
Mayor, when is he supposed to kick this off?
The, the date that it begins is... Third Saturday in August is when it will begin. And she has update, Ms. Heimicholi has updated this to reflect the times that we discussed at the work session, as you requested. I do want to share with this council that I talked to Donna Baloat, and she does not support this happening during the third Thursday event. So, I told her that I would relay that to this council. And of course, she's not here to speak, so I'm just passing that on to you.
Do you know why she would not support it?
She has concerns about the traffic and it detracting from the event, so...
Said liability issues too?
Yeah, you're right.
That was my question.
But I don't think the liability's on her. It's on the company and probably on the City of Gallatin. But of course, if there were an incident, they would...
That was my question, was about the liability and the insurance covering.
Sort of something like they are providing liability insurance. Museum and the Priest Brothers. They'll hurt me last week. I'm, I'm for it. I think it'd be all right, yeah.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
This is first reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-seven. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item ten is first reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-eight. Councilman Hayes is recognized.
This is ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving a preliminary master development plan for ES Maddox Commercial Park, authorizing the preliminary master development plan to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Just, just one thing, Mayor.
Okay.
I want to be sure that we get, after our committee meeting last week, our concerns were addressed on the screening, screening and stuff, correct, Bill?
Yes, sir. Bill McCord, City Planner. The ordinance that you had before you has a, an exhibit attached to that ordinance, and it's, it's a description of the site plan that, or the master development plan that accompanies the ordinance. And we had added a condition to address the screening of the mini warehouse that's going to be built on the west portion of it. Okay.
Any more discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance number oh-one-seven-zero-seven dash fifty-eight. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item eleven is Resolution R-one-seven-zero-seven dash thirty-five. Councilman Kemp.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a resolution approving reclassification of four parks and recreation employees. So moved.
Motion by Councilman Kemp, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is Resolution R-one-seven-zero-seven dash thirty-five. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item twelve is Resolution R-one-seven-zero-seven dash thirty-seven. And Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution approving a transfer of a hundred thousand dollars from the park maintenance facility, being resolved by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, that the fund in the amount of one-hundred-thousand dollars be transferred from the two thousand fourteen bond civic cent expansion account to the two thousand fourteen bond park maintenance facilities account for expansion related to the construction of a new park maintenance facility. And I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilman Alexander. Second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion?
What are we building, just for...
It's the, it's the maintenance barn that was provided for in the budget. But when the bids came in, they exceeded the budgeted amount. And so, in the bond, there was still some money that was all okay to be used in parks and recreation improvements. And so, we're moving that money from there to this, to fund it. Did I describe that right, David and Rachel? Excellent, thank you. Okay, this is Resolution R-one-seven-zero-seven dash thirty-seven. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item thirteen is Resolution R-one-seven-zero-seven dash thirty-eight. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution setting aside a lot located in the Gallatin Industrial Park Center at two-hundred Commerce Way, on map one-twelve parcel zero-one-six-point-zero-zero, for uses of future joint fire and police station and training facility. I wanted to mention that my son is a fireman, although this won't help matter to him monetarily. And I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I got one thing. I don't know if we need to put this on committee and talk about it or not, but, you know, we can pass this all day. But, and I know we're in some discussions, but we probably need to appropriate a small amount of money so we can get this thing cleared off, so they can do some work on this property to find out what we need. So, if we need to put it in committee, I'm okay with that.
Well, I think that this would be separate and different from that. I mean, I think we...
I understand.
Right now, I believe that Public Works is helping in clearing some underbrush, so they can do a topographical survey...
Okay.
That will give them some indication as to what may be, may be needed. Because truthfully, I think we're at a point where we don't know.
Let's put, let's put it on committee, our next committee, and talk about it, okay?
Uh, that talk about the funding, not talk about this.
That's correct.
When is Zack, Zack, when do you plan on trying to have a brush truck out there, a dozer out there, trying to do something on that piece of property?
We went out and looked at the property the other day. Um, the amount of clearing it's going to take, we're going to have to probably rent some special equipment just to get it where we're going to get in there to do a topo survey to see how much grading's going to be required. So, um, working with police department right now to get some figures together on... I mean, it's a pretty big project. There's some pretty mature trees in there. It's not quite as simple as going in there and bush hogging. Um, and we don't really have, it's going to take some special mulching equipment to even get in there to get to the area where the gun range is going, so... Um, we're going to have to get some money appropriated first. I guess it's going to be the first step, the way it's looking right now.
So, you need money appropriated to rent the equipment to do this work.
That's correct.
So, you can do that for the next work session then. Give us some kind of clause.
Thank you very much. That's what I'm getting at.
Would you please kind of make sure that that gets to us for the work session, you and Chief Van... Thank you so much. Okay, so I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Is there anything else anyone wants to discuss about dedicating the land?
Who's the second?
Um, I believe it, it was Love and Overton was the second. Okay, this is Resolution R-one-seven-zero-seven dash thirty-eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item fourteen is Resolution R-one-seven-zero-seven dash thirty-nine. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution granting permission to submit a letter of intent to apply for a CMAC, which is congestion mitigation and air quality program grant. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? I do want to clarify that, you know, we had some discussion at the last work session. And in talking with Mr. McCord and Mr. Tuttle, to some degree, we brought forth to you all for approval this, what I'm going to call kind of the Vol State Greenway, where, because we can apply for it as well as for a TAP. And we have several other projects in process that, you know, you guys have expressed concern and interest on. And we think this makes the most sense to meet what the requirements are for those two programs. I also want you all to know, because Mr. Wilkinson has been out of town when this thing came up, he's also going to be putting forth a CMAC application. And that's going to be for vehicles likely again. But that letter of intent, we're going to try and keep that within some existing budget, so... But that's not what you're voting on. You're voting on this. It's an eighty-twenty.
Now, I've got, however, and I'll vote for this.
Three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-six-hundred dollars.
I understand, I know, oh, I know. We're only eighteen days into this fiscal, into the new budget. Uh, and I got some more questions for next Tuesday on that. This is one of these things that if we are approved, we have to, we have, if circumstances change between now and receiving permission, we still have to vote on funding, correct? That's always been what we were told by previous administrations, that we can turn it down, correct? Rosemary, you've done a lot, or been involved in a lot of it. So, we do have a second option that a circumstance changed. Also, I would like, and the only greenway I've got to go on is the City Greenway that David maintains. And I'm sure the cost of that, which I voted for, is horrendous. And I would like to know, do we have any estimated annual maintenance expense of this Greenway? And that is, is it going to be landscaped anywhere close to the degree that this one is? If so, as long as this one is in distance, it could be a huge amount. Just like to know that, ongoing annual maintenance expense. Number two. Pretty consistent over the past years and years, when we had an opportunity to vote on one of these things, how far in advance does the state give us notification to consider a CMAC prior to having to vote on a CMAC? Because it seems like over the years, even before your administration, that these things only like a week or two sometime, right, Jimmy? You're shaking your head. And it's one of these things that, is that strategy? Or is the state just, they just wake up one morning and give you two weeks to make a decision on these things? I don't know.
Apparently, it looks like they opened it at the end of June, but we did not know that. And they don't open it at the same time every year, so we weren't knowing.
But they don't give you a lot of time to make your mind up.
But we just got notification, I think, the Friday before last Tuesday. I think that's when Mr. McCord received an email about it.
But we do have an opportunity that if circumstances change, we can get out of this thing on, on the reading, which we have to vote to fund the money. Don't vote fund the money, didn't give it back.
And what we're asking for is permission to submit a letter of intent, so...
Right. But it's not the final vote, that if we get it, we have to take it. If circumstances were to change and we found out additional information. But I'm voting for it. I don't know if I hit it the second time or not. I'm not committing for the second time, which don't make any difference to anybody, just make, but anyway, because a lot of information, this is huge.
It's big.
It's the first step on sixty-two million dollars worth of them.
Well, no, we're not committing to start going that far.
I remember last one started at a million, ended up at five million.
I don't want to do that.
I'm going to ask Rachel and Debbie some things too.
I don't want to do that. Anything else on this? This is, I do, I have a motion by Councilman Fennell. Hayes was the second. Okay, so this is Resolution R-one-seven-zero-seven dash thirty-nine. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, it does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda and brings us to other business. So, it's the time of the meeting where the council may come forward with any other business. And our city attorney, because I know she does have other business.
Yes, I wanted to let you know that we heard from the legis, a legislator today that they are running behind on getting us the bills that were passed that, specifically for us, the private acts. And then the county attorney contacted me on the term limit, private act that was passed, and wanted clarification, because in that ordinance, there was some standard language that said that the local governing body would determine whether it would be voted on at a special election or the general election. And what we had discussed was general election, but she wanted confirmation on that.
General election.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Motion to make it on a general election.
Motion by Vice Mayor Overton to include that in a general election. Second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, general election.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other, other business with this council?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Debbie, just, just for general information at a future committee meeting, since the ink has dried on the wage and benefit study survey that we did last fiscal, last fiscal year, okay? Could you just, at some point, tally up how many amendments, how many job classifications? We have amended that report. What dollar amount, when we approved that, that, that report, what it cost? How many job descriptions have changed since then? How many dollar amount, what's the dollar amount to the general fund? Which we just did fifteen of them about a week ago. We got more tonight, and that's fine, vote for all of them. Add all that dollar amount up, if you don't mind, okay? How many descriptions have changed? What the dollar amount changed over and above the approval of, of the wage and benefit from a lady, okay? Rachel, if you don't mind, get me a report on, we're eighteen days into this budget year. Would you just make a list for me, please, of how many amendments to that budget we have made to the general fund, as we have tonight, including this three-hundred-and-sixty-something thousand dollars, eighteen days into the fiscal year? Along with that, I do not have the report with me. How, when we approved the fiscal year budget seventeen-eighteen, how many dollars did we have difference between the designated and the undesignated ending six-thirty eighteen? Because that's how much quote-unquote money, excess money, we have to amend the budget. Okay?
And the budget's going to be different than the actual, obviously, and so you won't have the actual for some time.
We just, it'll be pretty close, unless there's been some discrepancy in that finance department, and I don't believe it is. Okay? Thank you.
Any other, other business from this council? Okay, I have one thing I brought to you all last week and didn't have the signatures on it. I didn't realize it until we got here. The road closing for the eclipse, Bentley Circle from East Broadway to Francis. I now have all the required signatures. And wanted to ask for your consideration of closing it for the eclipse from seven AM until six PM on that day. Says there are no, it's for shuttle bus dropping off and picking up. And it says there are no driveway connections and should not be a huge imposition. Motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Fennell. Is there...
What roads was it, Harry?
It's Bentley Circle between East Broadway and Francis Street.
Are people going to park there and be picked up down by the shuttle? Because there's not that much parking.
It's satellite parking on and around Hartsfield Pike. We're requesting permission to close Bentley Circle from East Broadway to Francis, so the five shuttles can drop off, pick up visitors that day. It's very important, as the visitors can walk and drop them off right there, so...
Mayor, I'd assume that I need to shut my business down that day.
That's entirely up to you, but I am advising residents who are concerned about the traffic on that day in Gallatin to watch from their backyard. I am advising residents who are concerned about the, um, traffic on that day in Gallatin to watch from their backyard.
That's fine. How do I go back advertising that I wanna, uh, offer parking at my place?
That's up to you. Any other, other business this evening? Okay, that moves us on to public recognition on non-agenda related items. This is the time of the meeting when people may come forward and address items not on the agenda. So we open the floor for that. We ask that you again come to the podium, give us your name and address, and speak your concern for us.
Mayor Wayne's coming, you know, the rodeo was this past weekend. It was a huge, huge success.
I was there all, the whole rodeo, thank you. So yes, I should mention the rodeo was very well done. Um, another thing I should mention, the buff, uh, the butterfly garden that was planted at Triple Creek Park, kinda led by the Pollinator Committee and David Collins, but all of the tilling and drawing off of it was done by David Brown and the Parks and Recreation Department. So that thing's planted. It's really gonna be fabulous when it's done. And of course, the Anti-Drug Coalition did do the rodeo on Friday and Saturday nights, and we did great. Had huge crowds, very excited for it. So thank you for reminding me of that. Mr. DeBoer.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street here in Gallatin. And I raised my voice tonight with regard to funding. I'd like to follow up on, uh, what, uh, Council Mayberry has been talking about lately with regard to, uh, funding of, uh, projects, et cetera, and, uh, where we need to go from here as far as new projects, et cetera. Uh, I've been doing a s- a slight study with all the building that's going on here in our city. Uh, Mr. Mayberry brought up the fact that we have a, a good backlog of, of, uh, projects that, uh, Mr. Chuck is taking care of for us, and there'll be more on the horizon. Uh, that does not mean that we're getting any money in the coffer just yet. And, uh, I talked to Ms. Rachel with regard to the issue this year of how much more did we get from a, um, property tax? I look at that tax real close, and I'll tell you why. If we have quite a bit of ex- extra, I don't call it extra, but, uh, more property tax coming in, then I can, I can say without equivocation that we can use that pro- uh, property tax to enhance what we have in our city, the excess. I'm not talking about what we got now, because we don't have enough money. We've been held up with regard to the deal over at, uh, on, uh, Albert Gallatin. That's been a sticker in our behind. And, uh, until that project is taken care of and a few others, and we see that in the coffer, Mr. Eddie, uh, we'll be able to, uh, see to do the projects that we want to do. And, and, uh, with regard to the, the situation with, uh, with regard to the, uh, projects y'all have, we're talking about tonight. It's like the b- a blind leading the blind, because you don't, you don't have, you don't know where the money is. That's just, that's that simple. We just don't have the money right now. But I see in the future, that with what we see in the future, with what Chuck's been working on and all these people building in our community, that we will have, uh, more property tax money comes in so that we can roll that over into our prop- our properties here and make them better. With that being said, the first, first thing I would do if I were in your shoes, I would be working right across that railroad track, getting those homes and, and streets over there in apple pie order. Now, that we also have what I call the, uh, Wilkinson Doctrine. Wilkinson Doctrine says that, that, uh, the city can't do it all. And that the owners of property in that said area are gonna have to help us out. And the other catch on that thing too is, do we have a right of way to do that? Now, if we have to go in there and fight with right of way, drop that li- drop that sucker like a lead balloon and go to somewhere else, that we do have a right of way that we can be able to, to, uh, do the same thing in another neighborhood. So now that's what I lay on your, on y'all tonight, because this is the time to start planning. And Eddie knows what I'm talking about by planning. We have no plan. Where's your plan, Eddie? Just that simple. I pick on you because I like you. You know, your mom was a good girl, and she took care of you good, but you know how that works, Mr. Eddie. Yeah. So that, that's, that's, that's the, that's the, that's the deal right there in a nutshell. And we appreciate you and what you do out for us, and we wanna share that with you tonight, and, uh, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. DeBoer. Anyone else wishing to be recognized under public recognition this evening? Now would be your time to come forward. Okay, I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so we will declare public recognition on non-agenda related items closed. And that leads us to the final action of the evening.
Can I ask one question? Do we have any, is there any CMAC sidewalk, CMAC money?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
So, but the choice was made internally to go with this greenway?
No, it was brought to you all. It, this, this, what, you all, you know, we discussed options last week, and-
Yeah, I asked, what's the most important sidewalks or greenway? And it said sidewalks, probably. If you had to make a choice, and immediately this one point three million dollar greenway shows up. Uh, no criticism, just a fact of the matter. Next week, see if there's any sidewalks where, out there, you know? We've talked about them for a long time.
We have, we have a CMAC application that we don't have the results on yet, for the West Eastland and the Lock Four. Yeah, that we don't have results on. That was last year's application. They haven't announced that yet.
So we still have one outstanding. So we get approval on that. What's our twenty percent on that?
I don't remember the amount, but it's budgeted. It is budgeted. And the, um, and then we have some, we have the safe routes to schools one, that's in progress. We have, um, various other small sidewalk improvements that are approved and budgeted. So we have lots of sidewalk projects working, and we're waiting on some others, but to, uh, to meet the, meet the goals of the CMAC grants and, and the alternative transportation grants, this greenway does, and it serves a highly dense population. So that was the reasoning there. So thank you. Anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn by Vice Mayor Overton? Second? Second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Everyone have a most lovely evening, and we look forward to seeing you again back here. Good night.